Good evening, all. I have seven PM here in Historic Town Hall on October 30th, 2025. As we begin the proceedings, please be reminded that we are being televised and recorded by Sandwich Community Television. Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anyone here for public comment? State your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to make a presentation.
Hello, everyone. My name is Amy Johnson. I'm the Executive Director at the Nye Museum, located at 85 Old County Road in East Sandwich. I'm here to tell you about something really exciting that the town of Sandwich should be looking forward to. The Smithsonian is coming. In partnership with Mass Humanities, the Nye Museum was selected as a host site for the Smithsonian traveling exhibition, Voices and Votes: Democracy in America. The exhibition will be on display from December 20th through January 31st. The museum received a grant from Mass Humanities to revolve the theme of the exhibit through events and programs. You can find out more on our website, www.nymuseum.org. For more information, you can look there to find out the hours of the exhibit and the associated program. We're also seeking volunteers, so if you'd like to be a docent for the exhibit, you can email me at amy, A-M-Y, at nymuseum.org, or our phone number is 508-888-4213. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, moving on to review and approval of minutes.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes from October 9th, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Town manager report.
So a few updates. Our next meeting is next Thursday, November 6th. I know we're going to talk about that a little bit later in the night, and then our next one after that in light of the holidays, and the special town meeting is on November 20th. Just a couple of ongoing efforts that I know you're partially aware of, but just to give you updates on. So we did send all of the contract paperwork to the low bidder for the town hall restoration work, which is Verica Construction. I know the board voted that a few meetings ago, so they have the contract info. So once that gets signed, we should be starting meetings fairly quickly. I also awarded a bid for the wastewater treatment modifications at Oak Ridge and Forestdale School, and the low bidder there was a company called Arden Group for the bid price of just over $430,000, which was less than the estimate. So again, all the contract paperwork has been transmitted to them, and we're just waiting for that to come back. The timing on that work is roughly 180 days, so once they get going, the goal would be either complete the work before school ends, or if they need to do some switchovers when students aren't at those two schools, to do those in the summer. But that should be fairly quick work. Couple of other things to update you on. If you remember, several meetings ago, there was a request for a new manager of record at Amari. You guys approved, but then there was a question about the corporation. So since then, Melissa's been working with the owners, and they've actually reinstated the former corporation, so there is no corporate change anymore. It's just still under the same corporation with the new manager of record, so that's been resolved. We wanted to let you know about that. This next one's sort of interesting in the sense that we've been waiting for a while on the town charter amendments. In a rough timeframe, my recollection is in May of 2023, we approved the change of the town clerk from elected to appointed, and then May of 2024, we did the remaining changes. It's been working its way through the process. You guys took a vote, I think, two meetings ago. So had another meeting today with the Senate Council's office, and what they've decided to do, which should speed up the totality of the work, is to combine the two bills into one, vote them all at the same time. So she got to me late today, the draft that she's done of the whole charter amendment, which would include in the new bill, the town clerk becoming appointed. John Giorgio and Lauren Goldberg from KP Law are going to review the draft, and then, as long as they're good with it, we've been asked, the board's been asked, to vote to approve the language before they can get it going again at the Senate. And so I should have for your meeting next week that vote. If not, it'll be on the 20th, but we're going to do everything we can to do it on the 6th, and Lauren Goldberg, who reviews all that, has already said she's going to try to get it done in time, so that's good. And then lastly, I just wanted to point out, and I know, I think I forwarded the email to the board, but there's going to be many, many opportunities for official town comment on the bridge projects. And so one of the early things is a draft environmental impact report that was submitted by the state. And so Paul Tilton submitted several comments on our behalf. I know we're going to add some more, you know, as time allows in the future, but I thought they were very comprehensive, and I have copies if anyone wants to see them. But there's going to be several chances through many other proceedings and regulatory reviews on the project.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Durham? Okay. Moving on to correspondence, statements, and announcements. Anybody? I have a few, if you don't mind. October 22nd, school committee met. The highlight was recognition of Malaya Gonzalez, a sixth grader at Oak Ridge School, honored by the Sandwich Fire Department for quick thinking during a recent flash fire in her home. The event took place the day after training from Fire Prevention Officer Andrew Mandell, which enabled Malaya to activate a plan, to make a 911 call, evacuate her sister, as well as the family dog, to the safety of the front yard. Fine job. The 2026 budget was updated. A professional school transportation efficiency study will be undertaken. 10/28, the Finance Committee met. All the financial articles on the November 17th, 2025 Special Town Meeting warrant were unanimously adopted by the committee. A tri-board meeting of the Select Board, FinCom, and School Committee will take place in December to receive updates and review updates of the fiscal 2027 budget cycle. Going forward, Halloween is tomorrow. Have a safe, happy, and healthy day. Anybody else? Moving on to staff meeting, public hearing. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 138, the Sandwich Select Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 30th, 2025, at 7:05 PM in the Sandwich Town Hall Auditorium, located at 130 Main Street, Sandwich, Massachusetts, to consider the application for a change of class of a seasonal to an annual on-premises all-alcoholic beverages liquor license for Dunbar Restaurant and Tea Room, located at 1 Water Street, Sandwich, Massachusetts, 02563. Kathryn Walston-Home as manager. Anyone wishing to be heard on the subject will be afforded an opportunity at this time. Motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion, we open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, wanted to introduce myself. Kathryn Walston-Home, owner, Dunbar Tea Room. As some of you know, we currently have two liquor licenses, so one's the seasonal all liquor license, and then one's the beer and wine year-round. So we're hoping to get this license to make it to just have one license.
Just one license?
Yep.
If I'm not mistaken, this was part of the larger package that we did with the state.
Yeah, it was, yep, yep.
Anybody else? Anybody from the public have any questions, comments? Motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion, we approve a liquor license change of class on on-premise all alcohol from seasonal license to annual for Dunbar Restaurant and Tea Room, 1 Water Street. Kathryn Walston-Home, manager.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter, and I should add that all of the appropriate paperwork is completed and in our packages. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, best wishes for success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Liquor license change of manager. Annual off-premises wine and malt license and seasonal on-premises all-alcoholic beverages license for ACKL LLC, doing business as The Brown Jug. Kevin White, proposed manager.
My name is Kevin White, and I'm proposing for a change of manager at The Brown Jug. And an annual liquor license, on-premise, off-premises.
Understood. All of the appropriate paperwork again is attached and signed. Any questions for Kevin?
I'm trying to remember, are there two licenses there?
Yeah, there's one sort of affiliated with The Brown Jug that you're familiar with, and then there's a pouring license from the budding property, so they can serve different types.
Yeah, I thought, did the state ever fix that, or no?
And they were good with it, but they didn't change anything, no.
Are you overseeing the other liquor licenses as well that's in the pouring?
Not currently.
So there's a change with that, you're going to, I believe you'd have to come back, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I think this application is for both licenses to...
Are you the license holder?
Yeah.
But you're ACKLLC. Well, it is in here twice, so that...
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. White?
Make a motion, we approve change of manager slash annual off-premise wine and malt license and seasonal on-premise alcohol beverage license for ACKLL LLC, DBA, The Brown Jug. Kevin White, proposed manager.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Best wishes for continued success, Mr. White.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Library Director Diane Castagliola. Glass Town Cultural District Steering Committee, public art installment request.
Hello, yes, my name is Diane Castagliola. I'm Director of the Sandwich Public Library. I am also the town liaison to the Glass Town Cultural District Steering Committee. I'm also on a committee for the town, coming up with a program for America 250, which is sort of related to all this. And I'm here tonight, you have the call to artists in your packet, but I'm seeking approval to issue a call to artists on behalf of Glass Town to have a piece of public art hopefully installed on the library lawn. If you're going up the driveway toward the library, it would be on your right in front of the building. Nice visibility from the street and the driveway for people both on foot and in their car. The call for, call to artists would be giving, issuing $9,500, which would include the artist's stipend materials installation and maintenance during the three-year temporary period. I have spoken to via email Engineering Facilities, DPW Building Department, and Tree Warden about the site, and they're all okay with it. I also know that once we select a piece to be installed there, I will need to be working with all of those departments to make sure that we are not excavating anything or hitting a water line, and I will coordinate all of that. I also just want to say that this call to artists, Anne, Scott Putney, and Melinda Gallant from Glass Town Cultural District Steering Committee, who are here tonight, worked with me on this, and we had a lot of conversation about the best location for this piece of sculpture, we're hoping. We talked about Mill Creek Park, we talked about the lawn at Hoxsey House, and I think that we landed on the library in part because this piece will be dedicated on July 1st, 2026, as part of the town's America 250 celebration, which is going to include a concert on the library lawn with the town band. Part of the reason we also thought the library would be a good location for this is for, part of what I love about being library director, and why I'm so passionate about libraries, is that libraries, public libraries, are the symbolism of democracy. It is about freedom of information, and as it says above, the BPL and many other libraries, it is free to all. So we think it would be a great place to have that sculpture for this event and dedication. I would love to answer any questions you may have for me.
It's an impressive undertaking. Does anyone have any specific questions?
Just on the, I'm assuming, who's doing, is the town doing the permitting on this, or is it the library? I think there's some other boards that would have to get cleared along with our...
I will, so I've been talking to the building department. I also know that we will go before HDC to, and I've spoken, yes, I've tried very hard to make sure I've spoken to or touched base with all the people that need to make this happen.
I was looking at the paperwork, and I didn't see any. What's this sculpture going to look like, or you can't say?
Well, we don't know yet, because we're waiting to see what proposals come in. As I put in the call to artists, we are hoping that someone, an artist proposes something that obviously makes sense for Sandwich, that it speaks to the historic nature of Sandwich Village, and that it embodies the spirit of Sandwich in America, that it is something that is engaging, inspires curiosity, and invites interaction. It doesn't actually have to be interactive, but it should be visually striking and thought-provoking. So we've specified all that, and then we, the Glass Town Cultural District Steering Committee, will review all the proposals and talk to the artists that submit, and then vote on the one that we think would make the most sense for the lawn.
I think it's a great, it's a great thing, and it's a great place for it.
Thank you.
And our library in particular has always been alive. It's one of the things about it that makes it unique when you compare it with some other communities. So having this type of art attached to it is really key.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
And thank you to the fans that you brought with you, the committee members.
After this artwork is settled upon, what is the extent of the review?
So, let me, well, would you like to be involved in that process, I guess? Is that, I'm curious if that's where you're going.
My question is along similar lines. So my recollection is when we did the sculpture out here with the Sandwich Arts Alliance, after they did the selection, and the concept was done, they brought it back here so that we could review it and give it basically a final stamp of approval, because, not that we don't trust you to do it, but if there's blowback, it's going to come over here.
We put in here too that the artist team may be required to meet with us, as well as the town, the Select Board, and appropriate town officials at certain phases. So I will gladly come back and speak to any of you about when we land on a piece that we think would be appropriate, to ask you all to weigh in on that gladly.
Will Historically be involved as well?
So that's HDC, correct? I have, I know I do have to go to them prior to, to get approval as well. So once we have, once we've received proposals, and we sort of pick what we think is best, we will go back around and check in with everyone, for sure.
I knew you'd be prepared, I needed to ask the questions.
I appreciate that.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm on the same, you know, thing, it's a great project, it's a great thing, it's just, to Dave's point, if there's, you know, I would feel more comfortable putting my signature on it if he came back and just showed us what exactly is going there, just to make, you know.
Just consistency, we did before.
Absolutely.
Okay, so motion to approve the venture with those qualifications, if you will?
I make a motion, approve the Glass Town Culture District Steering Committee to look at installment request.
With a further, with another review and approval?
Yeah, with another review by the Select Board when it's completed.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, as amended and seconded by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much as well. All business. Finalize and sign the November 17th, 2025 Special Town Meeting warrant. 11:13 preparation meeting.
Yeah, so in your packet was the draft as it existed on Tuesday. About the only thing that changed, I noticed a couple things in the reference section that I just updated, so it matches the numbering of the articles, and then also, I noticed we didn't have an explanation on the easements, so that's been added. But the warrant's good to go. We need, we plan to post it tomorrow roughly around noon, and then get it off to the printer. As soon as we have like a fully signed document with the Select Board and Constable, you know, we will put that on the town website likely by the end of the day tomorrow. And so I know the board already gave its consensus on what articles were on the warrant, so it reflects the financial article that Charlie mentioned earlier, which is additional, roughly $325,000 to the school, based on additional state aid that we received. So there's no tax money involved with any of these articles. There's four zoning articles, and there's three town bylaw articles, all of which are really important, and I know Leanne Drake gave us a great summary, our Director of Community Development, a couple weeks ago. And then towards the end, there's accepting two parts of the general laws to give the Select Board the authority to consider certain type of speed limit designations, and then lastly, and importantly, the last article is easements that are needed for the Quaker Meeting House-Katua Roads intersection project.
Great, now, you'll pass the package?
Yeah, so the signature pages are over here, and as long as we can sign them by the end of the night, I can get that all set in the morning. And then also, I just wanted to include the town moderators' meeting on the preparation for the upcoming Special Town Meeting. Had to coordinate some schedules, but between Moderator Sean Roush and Town Council John Giorgio and Town Clerk Taylor White, it's going to be Thursday, November 13th, at 4:00 in the large conference room downstairs at 100 Route 6A. Again, very straightforward, the draft motions went to Town Council today, I don't anticipate any problems. It should be, you know, pretty straightforward in terms of that meeting, but again, that's Thursday, the 13th, at 4:00 at 100 Route 6A.
Other than our signatures, do you need anything from Mr. Durham?
I think we're good to go, yeah.
Yeah, we've gone thoroughly over this in the past, and we're comfortable with the warrants.
I would just ask everybody at home to brush up, read the articles, don't show up to town meeting, and, you know, ask what we're voting on. You know, again, we're doing this with, by my count, five, four people in the audience and one reporter, and it's, you know, it's part of a $100 million-plus budget, you know, every year that we go through and do these town meetings, and, you know, changing ADU, you know, bylaws, there's some, you know, zoning changes that can affect everybody here. So please, you know, be an informed voter and decision-maker for the town, and do your homework prior to the meeting.
Close avenues and SCTV as well?
Yes.
So next Tuesday, Leanne and I are taping a show on SCT, just to explain what the warrant is, and then after that, Melinda is meeting with Leanne and Heather to do a separate taping on the zoning and the town bylaw changes, even though we'll cover both. And I will say, like, the zoning is really important, a lot of time's been spent on that by the planning board, and it, if anything, it gives homeowners more flexibility on what they can do with their properties, it helps businesses with sign capabilities while still protecting, you know, the historic things that Sandwich values, and it doesn't take away any, you know, review process through the Historic District Committee in the properly designated areas. And the town bylaws are really important as well, especially the one about short-term rentals. You know, there's, I think, last I had heard, almost 800 properties in Sandwich that are officially registered through the Department of Revenue. There's probably some that aren't, but most are. And if this bylaw doesn't go through, it invalidates your right to have that short-term rental, so I can't tell you how important it is to follow state law, and we adopt this bylaw. So, you know, there was a lot of discussion, and we were nice in our comments, but I think we'll be more pointed this time if questions come up on how important it is.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay. New business. 11:06 Select Board Meeting start time. Woods Hole Group and Joint Base Cape Cod updates.
Yeah, so this is just a quick update. So next Thursday night, we actually have three pretty big presentations. The Woods Hole Group wants to give you an update, and this is at the request of Dave DiCanto and myself. As many know, Dave is going to be retiring as our long-term Department of Natural Resources Director later in November, so it'll probably be the last time he comes before us, so we wanted Woods Hole Group to update the board on really five different initiatives that they've been working on. We've met twice to prepare for it. It's really meaty, good information, so that one's important. Just to update you on the Joint Base Cape Cod, we were thinking we might want to start the meeting a tad early, like at 6:00, but our main contact at JBCC said that while the federal government is shut down, there's actually a restriction for those departments that are still open, like the active military at the base. They're not allowed to go to outside of normal office hour meetings. So if the federal government is still shut down, they won't be able to come. So I'm supposed to know tomorrow or first thing Monday whether or not they're going to make it, so I think it's probably less of a need to start early. I was just going to see what the board thought, because each, I would guess Woods Hole Group will probably go for about an hour with knowing that we'll have questions, and then JBCC, that usually goes for a good half hour, 45 minutes. And then also Steve Tucker, the town planner, is coming to update you on an affordable housing project right near the base off Snake Pond Road. You remember that there was a proposed project, the back half of the property was used for a solar project, and that's been reinvigorated, a very attractive proposal that I know most of the town staff really strongly support, and so they're filing it as one of those local initiative petitions, so it requests a Select Board support. So Steve's going to come in to explain what they've been meeting about for several months, so. So there's really three, longer than normal, I would say, presentations for next week. Knowing it's highly likely the JBCC topic will come... Knowing it's highly likely the JBCC topic will come off, and they're not gonna come back till after the new year.
Any thoughts on a proposed?
If it goes that way, it's, it should be fine with me, as long as it's earlier than like six. But I'm gonna guess it's not going that way.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
It's like a low likelihood.
Yeah. So, how about plan on seven? If something weird happens, I'll reach out to you guys. We have till late, and the day on Tuesday to post it.
Let's do that.
All right.
Thank you. Recommended appointments, as Mr. Schimmel has seen cause to resign from his representation on the Cape Cod Commission. We have an application, a letter of interest from Ms. Anne McManus, who is, which is in your folders, and seems like a very enthusiastic, efficient, and intelligent person. Any other comments?
I just add, the time demands for that position are significant, as, you know, Woody Mitchell would share with us regularly. And, you know, Anne's aware of that, and she's been a longstanding member of the planning board, served us really well, and importantly, understands a lot of the planning concepts that get considered at the county level.
Do we have any times on that, dates or anything?
That's a three-year appointment, as I remember, and it has a weird start date, so I'd have to look at that.
Okay, we can add that to that.
Yeah.
Make a motion, we appoint Anne McManus to the Cape Cod Commission as a representative.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yes, I'm comfortable as well. An application, if you will, from Mr. Don Royer to be appointed to the Commission on Disabilities. We have a little bit of familiarity with him from our last joint meeting televised meeting with the commission. His qualifications seem appropriate? Anybody have any alternative thoughts?
Is there a time limit on that also?
I think that's an, I believe that's an annual, through the end of the fiscal year, I think, yeah.
I make a motion, we appoint Don Royer to the Commission on Disability.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Royer. Other matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair, I have none. Anybody else here for public comment? Seeing none, closing remarks.
Just, everybody take a look at the school, the high school athletics calendar. We're entering the tournament season, so all the sports teams have entered the, you know, the tournament if they made it. I know tomorrow afternoon, the field hockey team plays their first game at three PM at the high school.
Congratulations. And as I do, please continue to maintain the situations in Eastern Europe and the Middle East and the overall threats to world peace, as well as those who have suffered here at home, in your thoughts and prayers. And then, executive session. Under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, subsection Twenty-One-A, the chair declares that having an open session may have a detrimental effect upon the town's bargaining, litigating, or negotiating negotiating position as applicable. Purpose number three, collective bargaining issues, library union. Purpose number three, litigation strategy, encroachment on town property. Purpose number six, disposition of real property, Town Hall Annex, one forty-five Main Street. Do I have a motion to close the public session? Open the executive session, we will not be reconvening in public, and our next meeting will be here next Thursday at seven PM, we think, here in Historic Town Hall.
Make a motion, we close the public session and go into the executive session.
Second.
A motion by Mr. George, a second by Mr. Hockter. May, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
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 Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Have good evenings.
Do you guys wanna stay here or go downstairs? I know they're shutting the mics off, so.